There's nothing to report out of the study session, so I will go ahead and entertain a motion to close the study session. That is my motion. Hello? Is there a second to close the ... okay, there's a second by Councilmember Susan Rubio. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, I'd like to open up the Ballpark City Council, the finance and the housing concurrently. So today is July 18th, 2018, and the time is 7:10. So I will have, is Pastor Flores or Pastor Jackson present? Pastor Flores, if you could lead us in an invocation followed by the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let us pray. God, we pause on the onset of another council meeting where we come to honor you and serve your people. Thank you for Baldwin Park and in this month, Lord, where we recognize the birthday of the United States, Lord, that we recognize the privileges you've given us to speak, to share, and to serve. We pray, Lord, for your wisdom upon all of our deliberations and discussions. We pray, God, that your protection would be upon our city and all those that dwell in that, Lord. We pray, God, that you would continue to grow and develop our young people in this summer, Lord, as they participate in various recreational programs and various summer enrichment programs. God, we just thank you, Lord, and we just commit this time to you in the wonderful name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to pledge to our flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to, first of all, close on behalf of a community member, a football player, an individual that partook in many aspects at Ballpark High School, graduate in 1985, Albert Johnson. So our deepest condolences goes out to his family. So our condolences goes out to the entire Johnson family. All right, anyone else wishing to close on anyone's behalf? Yes?
Yes, Mayor, on behalf of Hector Castro, a longtime resident of Baldwin Park. He passed away about a week ago.
Thank you.
So condolences to his widow and to his family.
Thank you. We will close on behalf of both these individuals. All right, so at this point, council members have anything else to share? If not, I will ask Maria Contreras if she could conduct our attendance. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everybody in Baldwin Park and council. I also would like to close in memory of my mother. She passed away three years ago.
Okay, condolences.
Councilmember Cruz Vaca?
Present.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor Pratim Ricardo Pacheco?
Rosa.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you very much. All righty, so at this point, let me just go over here to the agenda here. We don't, do not have any presentations, which will actually, excuse me, thank you very much. Okay, so we do have two presentations. The first one is the introduction of the new Public Works Director, Sam Gutierrez. Thank you, Sam. I think I have a little bio, right? Okay, Sam, be ready. Okay, Sam graduated from Belmont High School in downtown. Hey, hey, no way.
Belmont.
From Belmont, yeah, I know where that's at. Wow, okay. Down by Echo Park, right? Right on, brother. Okay. From Attended Cal Poly Pomona for a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. He began his career in the city of West Covina as a part-time engineering intern. He was hired full-time as an engineer, technician in the Public Works Department and was then promoted to civil engineering assistant. Eventually, he joined the management team as the Associate Civil Engineer. Sam joined the city Baldwin Park family and the city's engineering manager in June of 2015 before getting the opportunity to act as the city's Public Works Director in July of 2016. Since joining the Baldwin Park team, Sam has made notably contributions which include overseeing the capital improvement program and implementing projects such as the renovation of Walnut Creek Nature Park, construction of center medium landscape improvements, transit center improvements, and construction of several street improvements projects totaling over 10 center lanes, miles of improved roadways. In addition, Sam has been overseeing the city's maintenance operation, making enhancements, including reorganization of staff to efficiently address and manage maintenance issues. Moving forward, Sam will continue to work on projects that makes the city Baldwin Park a better place to live and work. This includes the implementation of express line, trolley bus routes, complete street improvements, and rail crossing improvements for the implementation of the quiet zone and provide everyone here with an In-N-Out Burger. No, I just tossed that one in. All righty, so thank you very much. Just give me a good hand. Thank you, Sam. Okay, so then let me see the next item that we have in the presentation, the presentation by Public Works staff, MRSRC, Funding Clean Air Equipment and Tech. Sam, are you handling this?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you, sir.
I would like to bring up David Lopez. He will be doing a presentation that is part of the program. So the MSRC has awarded the city about $98,000 for improvements related to energy, near-zero and zero emission vehicles and CNG stations. Part of the deal is that we adopt the resolution and do a presentation, and I'll hand it over to David Lopez to do the presentation.
Before we do that, Sam, sorry, but I know that, I believe your family's here as well. Can we have them stand?
Yes.
Your family here, so we can recognize them? All right, here we go. You know, pictures. All right. Well, yeah, Sam, come on, Sam, yeah, bring him up here. Sam, come on up here for the picture, Sam.
And also, Mayor, also, there's a lot of the staff here supporting Sam.
You got a big picture?
Yeah, lots of the, lots of the Public Works employees and so forth and city employees that are supporting Sam. So come up for a group picture.
All right. All righty, thank you. Get everyone up here. Bring the family as well. We'll do the family first, no? So that will fit everyone? Ariel. Don't forget.
I picture with Sam.
Thank you. Oh, hey, Monica.
Hi. Yeah. Yeah. Whatever.
I thought that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I thought it was her.
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 Unless she was your sister.
I thought it was her.
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 Hey, Rob, okay.
Yes.
Nice.
You want to sit up somewhere?
On that side?
Do you want to get my hand here?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't want to block you.
Turn it over here.
Turn it over here.
One, my blocking.
Okay.
Three.
Thank you. Okay. Congratulations. Okay, we're bringing Public Works up.
Felicidades, Rose.
Oh, yeah.
No. No, no, no.
I tried to express something, but.
Muchos gustos de conocer al señor.
Estamos muy orgullosos de ser ustedes.
All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations, brother.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, come on in there, man.
Move it.
Oh, there's Helen.
Yes.
Helen.
Come on.
Come on.
Come on.
Come on.
Susan, Ricardo.
Oh, yes, all right.
Benny.
Hold on, hold on.
All right, go on.
Very good.
Hold it, hold it, look over here.
We're going to do it twice, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's an expert.
You may get it.
Manny.
Supporting.
I like that.
Get your mom a gun.
Where's your mom and dad?
Oh, they want to.
Yeah, they, they.
All right, just give me an email, and I can film.
Local background.
Go ahead, please.
A thousand bullet trick.
A thousand bullet trick.
God, is that air, is that air conditioner working?
No, it's a bayou.
Thank you, Bart. Thank you, me too. Thank you.
It's really weird.
It's really weird.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's all right.
Members?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All righty. Okay, at this point, there's no further presentations, but go ahead. Lopez, this.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers.
Thank you.
This short presentation will provide information on how this program will benefit our city.
Speak in the mic. Goodbye.
Through a partnership with MSRC AQMD. To achieve MSRC AQMD's objectives and priorities, this program will match our $98,000 AB 2766 funds with up to $98,000. That's a dollar-for-dollar match for a year. The South Coast air quality region is designated as an extreme non-attainment zone for ozone, which is known to be a cause of respiratory ailments like asthma and a major component of smog. Non-attainment means that we have not met air quality standards shown here on this, on this table. This graph shows the planned reductions of NOx gases by 45% in 2023 and 55% by 2031. So we're, we have a little bit of catching up to do. Because AQMD, MSRC cannot achieve this reduction alone, this means that this partnership and others in our region are very important. The air quality management plan here shown, implemented in 2016, is the roadmap to meeting the region's mandated air quality objectives. The way this partnership works is by receiving funds for, reserving funds for our city for the implementation of plant technologies like zero and near-zero emission vehicles, including CNG stations like our Baldwin Park Dillow CNG station, which is soon to be constructed. Other ways to help reduce emissions through regulations like the required vehicle smog testing program. This program is 100% voluntary with funding already reserved for our city to help meet our region's air quality objectives to reduce air pollutant emissions. For the city to partner with MSRC and receive this funding, a resolution must be adopted. For your consideration, item number 18 on our consent agenda is provided. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add that this funding will be used towards CNG infrastructure at the maintenance yard and the leasing of a zero emissions heavy-duty vehicle. And it's item 18 on your agenda.
Okay, under consent calendar?
That's correct.
All right, okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, seeing no other presentations at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak here, approximately three, three minutes.
Well, unfortunately, they made me first. I hear there's some, I'm Thomas Carey, I was a former resident here. There's some construction going on in the city and people not pulling the proper permits for asbestos abatement as well as lead-based paint. Those are supposed to be done by state-licensed contractors. I would expect the mayor of this city to know that, but I guess the laws and rules don't apply. The redo of replacement of windows, everybody else has to pull a permit. There's no permit of record for Manny Lozano, the mayor here. Electrical boxes and things like that. The rules don't apply to some people. I put windows in when I was here, and I got a letter promptly about it threatening fines and all kinds of stuff, and I didn't even know you had to have a permit for something like that some 18 years ago. So, and the permits are sky-high here, of course, that acts, adds to your property tax value. You don't want that, but it's okay for everybody else that's here to have to pay all those things. Why is it you don't have to do it? And if this stuff was taken and dumped somewhere, some landfill somewhere with the lead-based paint, because any house built before '78 has lead-based paint. So that landfill is now contaminated with asbestos as well as lead-based paint amongst other things. I wonder what the fines are for stuff like that. So as the state will find out, oh, Mr. Tuttle will see to that, I'm sure. Are there permits pulled for this? According to Mr. Tuttle, Manny, there weren't any permits pulled for your house over there on Ohio Street and Baldwin Park Boulevard. No permits. You won't say anything. You won't answer me here. This is the information that I have. And there's other things that are going on in this city, too. This, this presentation about the dirty air and all this stuff, this is a load of crap, too. They keep building and building and building, and then they wonder why the air is dirty, why the freeway is clogged, and cars running around with modified exhausts making all kinds of goddamn noise and leaking everything imaginable. That's perfectly okay, too. There seems to be no rules. He's, oh, I'm going to run out of time here. And if anybody needs to be sanctioned, it should be that Maxine Waters bullying people who work for Trump. We'll find examples, she has, just like some of you on this council. Now, look, look that up, Monica. You're probably on the phone right now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Hello, City Council, residents of Baldwin Park. Hey, Mayor, you know, when I had my roof put on my house, I had to get a permit. When I did my water heater, I had to get a permit. When I put my windows in, I had to get a permit. It was my fortunate, good fortune that the contractor I had forgot to get it, so he had to pay all the fines. Your people, I should say, yeah, your people, I hear you bought a home, you got a loan, but you don't have no permits for anything. So why did I have to pay for permits that you don't have to pay for? Are you somebody special in this country, or are you a dictator? I think you're a dictator. You're saying to the public out here, you guys pay all the stuff we need, but I don't have to. You know who does that? Trump. You look just like him. So why are you any different than anybody else in the city of Baldwin Park? I know, I don't have to answer anybody, but you're a thief, because you're taking taxpayers' money, which we all donate to, including you, and you're using it like it's your personal money. What's the matter with you guys up there? The rest of you city council people should be saying, hey, that's not proper. Of course, a lawyer says, yes, it is, we did it legally. But that's what's wrong with this country right now. You people that run this city of Baldwin Park, you don't work for nobody but yourself. And every time I tell you guys that, I find out I'm more right than you guys are, because I didn't, I had to get permits. What's wrong with you? You're supposed to be all that generous to the public? I think you're a liar, and I'll call you a liar every time I see you, because you're lying to the public, and you're stealing our money. We give it to you people grunly, but we still give it to you, and you abuse it. I'm not saying the rest do, because I haven't found out, but soon as they do, I'll tell I think you should sit down and wait till I'm done talking, sir. Hey, you're not listening.
Continue on, continue on.
See, that's how rude you people are. It's urgent that you talk right now to somebody, but it's not urgent if we interrupt you. I can't be interrupted, you shouldn't be either. But I'll tell you one thing, I got thrown out because I interrupted you one time, and I'll come up here and say it every time I get a chance. Oh, my three minutes are up.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I need a translator.
All right, so.
Señorita Avila.
Translating in English.
In English. I'm going to put it in Spanish.
I want to talk to Susan Rubio first. There's two things I want to say. Susan Rubio didn't pay her taxes, but there's like 80% of us here that didn't pay our taxes. I also want to say that she married a man that. No, no, no. That he's not a sufficient man. I received some papers when she was running for Senate. I checked the papers and I sent her a copy, because I wasn't going to say lies like they are just doing. Right now, the community is really bad with Ms. Garcia, because she came out in a picture with Susan's sister. Another thing is about the house that the mayor bought, that he didn't pull permits for anything, and the community is aware of that. Why is he doing that when he sees something bigger than the community? Another thing that we have seen is the city attorney, he writes up contracts for 10 to 15 years? To 20 years. I think it's time that we put another attorney that will do something for the city of Baldwin Park. Another thing is that the attorney is a very close friend of Susan's ex-husband. Those are things that the community come to tell me. It looks really bad that the council is not doing anything, and, and I hope that Susan gets Senate. Another thing that we need to look at is people from the city that are usually two together, and they need to stop and look at the furniture, that it's.
And not just take pictures.
And not just take pictures, they need to pick it up. The furniture stays out there from 10 to 12 days, and waste management doesn't pick it up. They should be picking it up.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
My name is Abel, I have a business here in Baldwin Park for 25 years, and now I lived in Baldwin Park for 40. The reason I'm here is because I'm tired of being attacked. Code enforcement has come to my business. I have to demolish or get rid of the things that they say, and then I fix it, and then they come back again. What you need to focus is on the streets that need help, not focus on businesses that actually bring money to the city. The city, the streets that I travel, they have holes, they need to be repaired, and I have to be reporting it. I shouldn't be doing that, you should be doing that. If you attack me, you should do the same for yourself. If you purchase a home and you need to do repairs, you should get permits, but you think you're above the law, because you are the law. Okay, yeah, and también, yo creo que es, ya, yo estoy harto que no, pues no me apoyen en nada ustedes todo tiempo. Yo, por ejemplo, yo levanto la ciudad las llantas, todo el waste y lo tiro, no me pagan ni un cinco. Yo no puedo ser más por. Las personas de la ciudad, la mayoría del tiempo andan dos juntos, ¿verdad? Muchos paran y agarran retratos de furniture que están en el camino.
Another thing that we need to look at is people from the city, they're usually two together. And they need to stop and look at the furniture, that it's out-
And not just take pictures.
And not just take pictures, they need to pick it up.
Vienen y a veces dura unas semanas, diez días antes que la levanten. El waste management debe levantarlo, pero ellos no les importa.
The furniture stays out there from ten to twelve days, and waste management doesn't pick it up. They should be picking it up.
All right, thank you.
Me llamo Abel y soy de un negocio por veinticinco años y vivo en Baldwin Park por cuarenta años más o menos.
My name is Abel. I have a business here in Baldwin Park for twenty-five years, and now I lived in Baldwin Park for forty.
Okay, la razón que estoy aquí es porque ya estoy harto de la ciudad que no me dejan en paz. Todo el tiempo me atacan. Hago como me dice el code enforcement. Luego todo mi negocio y luego después llego a otra cita que tengo que tomar otra vez. Y ya estoy harto que tienen que parar estos problemas o no sé qué voy a hacer.
The reason I'm here is because I'm tired of being attacked. Code enforcement has come to my business. I have to demolish or get rid of the things that they say. And then I fix it, and then they come back again.
Lo que ustedes tienen que hacer, trabajar en otros lados más importantes, las calles, todo eso, no andar molestando a negocios que dan a la ciudad dinero.
What you need to focus is on the streets that need help, not focus on businesses that actually bring money to the city.
Porque en las calles que yo recorro, donde quiera que ando hay hoyos, todo eso, el pavimento todo acabado y reportando cosas que se van mal. Y no tengo que hacer eso, ustedes tienen que hacerlo yo.
The city, the streets that I travel, they have holes, they need to be repaired. And I have to be reporting it. I shouldn't be doing that, you should be doing that.
Ahora que ustedes creen, me atacan duro ustedes también tienen que hacer lo mismo. Sacar también sus permisos cuando hacen una casa como una casa igual como nosotros lo hacemos, pero ustedes no hay nada de eso para ustedes porque son... Ustedes son la ley, no sé por qué lo van así.
If you attack me, you should do the same for yourself. If you purchase a home and you need to do repairs, you should get permits, but you think you're above the law because you are the law.
Okay, también yo creo que es, ya estoy harto que no, pues no me apoyen en nada ustedes todo el tiempo. Yo, por ejemplo, yo levanto a la ciudad las llantas, todo el waste y lo tiro, no me pagan ni un cinco. Yo no puedo ser más por, pues más por mí.
I'm tired because you don't help me. I help by picking up tires and picking up things, and you just don't support me at all.
Okay, pues es todo que ponga más atención en los ciudadanos y que es bien más la ciudad para que no los corren de la ciudad los negocios.
You need to pay more attention to the citizens and to the businesses. You need to take care of them so they don't, you don't get them out of here.
Y es todo, gracias.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and residents of Baldwin Park. My name is Christine Alarios, and I'm the library manager here at the Baldwin Park Library. I wanted to let everybody know about a program we're having on Saturday, July 28. Are you interested in opening a business in ALA County but don't know where to start? Then Small Business Saturdays is for you. Through our partnership with the ALA County Department of Consumer and Business Affairs, you will learn how to become an entrepreneur, steps to opening a business, where to seek financing for your business, the latest information about business taxes, how to obtain a business license, library resources for small businesses, and much more. I hope you will all join us on Saturday, July 28, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the Baldwin Park Library. And I will leave some information in the back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine, appreciate that. All right, moving along with public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. First of all, I'd like to say, Mayor Lozano, 14152 Ohio Street. You have a house that you purchased in June. You also have two dumpsters that you've had there. There's no permits. There's no permits for the dumpsters. There's no permits for the electrical box, the windows, the front doors, all the stuff. We took pictures before and after. Things need to be fixed. You make all the other residents and businesses in this city conform, there's no special buddy deals here. So I would like to see that that's done. I made a public request on it, and I'm going to follow it through, and you know I do that. And we'll be checking to make sure that all the proper fees are paid because that increases your property tax. You already got a deal on the house to begin with below market value. So I think you should be paying your proper fees. Now then, we have another issue. The church has notified me you bounced a check on them. It's not the first time. I'd like to know when you're going to take care of that check for them. Because that's pretty humiliating for our residents here that our own mayor can't even make his check good and can't even write good checks. And Pacheco's told me numerous other times that you've done that. That's when we and Pacheco were talking. Now then, I want to go on to the Royal Coaches contract here and Hadley deal. Talking to numerous residents and everything else, they want to have a joint deal to where two companies and people have a choice. Now, the Royal Coaches has numerous violations, numerous code violations. They have a building built behind their office that is their body shop that was illegally built with no permits or nothing else. They're running on a license over on the smog shop behind him as an auto body underneath his license, which means he's operating one, two businesses under one license. Shannon, you sent me a packet for Paul Cook. You guys need to look into that. But nobody does that because they're saying, well, the property has to be evaluated with what you're trying to do, a change in the property. Has nothing to do with code enforcing. You guys need to code enforce your buddies too. Not poor Abel over here, he gets code enforced, but your buddies don't get code enforced. I've done your code enforcing on that park avenue. I've done the red curbing on that park avenue. Royal Coaches is nothing more than they take advantage of this and they pay the coffers. They pay all you politicians off.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, Kevin Rooney, resident and planning commissioner. I just wanted to bring up the item of Hallwood and Main. They're putting like bubble, I don't know the technical term for it, but they're bubbled sidewalks. And there's already been like several miss, close misses where cars can't turn, they got to back up, and oncoming traffic almost hits them. Those sidewalks are way too far out. Now, they got the concrete for the curbs around them already, but the rest is just dirt still. It's not too late to change them and give them a little bit more room. Because if you don't, there's going to be a lot of accidents. And from what I hear, they're putting those there to make the neighborhood safer, which, that street's already safe because they put the light there because several years ago, a little girl died right there. So I am asking you guys to reconstruct that corner, at least that corner, because those bubbles are like outrageous. There's no, if two cars can't get through it at the same time in regular traffic. And also, I was informed that it might be a private street, which is Downey and Bogart between Los Angeles and Clark. Those streets got like over two or three hundred potholes in them. Even if it is private, the street say Baldwin Park on them. They got the street signs, they say city of Baldwin Park. I mean, isn't there something we can do? Send a notice out to the residents offering assistance or something to get those streets fixed? That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. All right, moving along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak on a public communication? Okay, see, no further interest, and I'll declare the public communication closed. All right, all right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, council members are going to go over to consent-
Mayor, I just have a quick update I wanted to. Just like to talk about some of the positive things that we've done here in the community. If you look at your screen here. So I wanted to go over some of the Baldwin Park accomplishments. I think we've done quite a bit of work here. We started a tree planting grant program. The city received a grant from Supervisor Hilda Solis in the amount of $200,000 to plant trees. And staff has partnered with the San Gabriel Valley Conservation Corps to plant over 300 trees citywide. The San Gabriel Valley Corps is recruiting young adult residents from the city of Baldwin Park, offering jobs to work on the project. And the residents of Baldwin Park interested in a free tree to be planted and maintained in front of their home can contact the Public Works. The information for that is on the website. We're doing a sidewalk and concrete project. I know right now it looks like a mess out there, but eventually, when it gets through, traffic will be able to move faster. And those that are either pedestrians on the street, because we've had a lot of accidents out there recently, and also if you're using your bicycle, there'll be bike paths for you to the city. Street Maintenance Division has completed landscaping work in and off street medians along Ramona Boulevard from Baldwin Park to Bogart Street within the city's downtown area. And the landscape work features a draw-tolerant panel complementary to the recently completed center median project. And the project also involved is the installation of drip irrigation and water savings devices. Our last one is our solar panel canopies. We've completed the installation of photovoltaic systems at the Morgan Park, Barnes Park, and city's maintenance yard. The energy generated will be integrated to existing electrical systems and distributed to the SCE electrical grid. Excess energy will be used to offset electrical costs at various sites citywide. The total energy generated at Morgan Park will offset the energy consumed by making Morgan Park a 100% clean energy site. The solar panel project will generate approximately $165,247 in annual, in annual energy savings. So I want to thank our staff for doing a good job. I know it took a while to put that project together, but the solar panels are finally installed, and we're starting to reap the benefits from that. So I just like to ask our city manager, I guess he's not in his test there, but... Sam, could you tell us approximately, how much are we saving? I know that the power panels have been in place for a while, and maybe you could tell us a little bit about the solar energy savings dollar-wise?
Great, absolutely. So we are expected to save about $165,000, a little bit over $165,000 annually. And we've already started to see some of those savings come in. And there's two sites that are still not online, so we're expecting more savings there. We did a total of seven energy conservation measure improvements citywide. We upgraded the community center. We installed a new HVAC system there. So altogether, the energy savings that we're going to get are going to total over $165,000.
All right, thank you. I think it's really positive work from all our staff, our Public Works Department, and everybody that's staff that has been working on these projects. I think it's awesome. And also, just wanted to compliment our city attorney. Last year, they negotiated a $1 million settlement for green space for Baldwin Park. And they've also worked with all the cannabis primitives in record time. They did it very quickly. And other cities are still looking at and taking the cannabis ordinances that we have, and they're implementing a lot of them. And I think even our charges are probably less than most cities. But we've already collected more than a million dollars. So just wanted to thank our city attorney for doing an outstanding job. I think you guys are doing great, thank you very much. Give a round of applause. Thank you, that's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that, council member Ricardo. Ricardo Pacheco. All right, so at this point, before we go on, just want to, this is to announce as required by government code section 54952.3, members of the city council, also members of the board of directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. So, all right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the consent calendar. So council members wishing to pull any items? Yes, council member Cruz Baca.
I would like to pull item four, five, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
Okay, hold on, go back to nine, after nine?
Nah, it's, let me repeat it. Number four, five, seven, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, and nineteen.
Okay, very good. All right, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to pass consent calendar with the exceptions of the ones that were, yes.
I want to pull fifteen as well.
Fifteen, you want to pull which one, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to pass the consent calendar with the exceptions of the ones that were just read out. That's my motion?
Second.
Second by council member Cruz Baca, any objections? See none, so move. All right, first one is the consideration of a consultant service agreement with Keller Williams Covina for city property sale services. Council member Cruz Baca.
Yes, I have a question about this. I would like for this item to come back so that we can see what direction Ms. Ruiz is going to take in regards to some of the properties. And also, I saw that her contract is for 36 months. I would like to see this contract for a year. On, if you see on the staff report at the bottom, it's the second to the last paragraph that says consultant services agree with Keller Williams Covina for a period of 36 months. I would like to have that lowered to 12 months. And I would like to bring this back so that we can probably have a presentation or something from Ms. Keller as to what she's going to be doing and what property she's going to be looking at and what areas of Baldwin Park. So could we bring this back, please, to August 1st meeting?
All right, there, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to bring this, is there a second to bring this back?
Well, I'm a little confused. Is this, this is the item that we discussed prior, correct? Don't we need this contract in order for her to move forward and negotiate the properties?
Yeah, but it's for 36 months. If we're going to move forward, I would like it for 12 months.
Do you want to extend it for 12?
No, it's for 36 months now, according to this contract. I would like for it to be amended to 12 months.
Is there a reason why it was for that? Shannon, you want to discuss that? Is there a particular reason why we chose so many months?
We do need the item in regards to the issues that we talked in closed session. It's that the councils wish, if they would like to make it longer, sometimes these commercial transactions take a little longer. But we can come back to council and renew it in 12 months if you wish.
All right, so at this point, there, is that it? There's a motion, there's a motion by councilman Cruz Baca to bring this back to another meeting. Is there a second?
To bring it back for one year, is that what I'm hearing?
No, no, for the August 1st meeting, so that we can have a presentation from Ms. Keller, so that she can give us a plan. Oh, not Ms. Keller, I'm sorry, Ms. Ruiz, as to what she's going to be doing on behalf of Keller Williams.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
We did hear something in closed session, however.
Yes, okay, that's what I was confused, because I thought we had already discussed this as part of what we're doing. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, this, let me just ask, will this delay the, okay, you know what? And I have, definitely have an issue. I prefer that we pass it primarily because I know we discussed something I think that we need to move on immediately per our study session. So at this point, there's a motion?
And I was going to add that because I know we discussed the urgency of not being first. I know we can't reveal what we're discussing because it was in closed session, but there was an urgency. If we don't move forward, then we might lose the opportunity, so, yes.
Mayor, excuse me, then I will do a substitute motion that we move forward, but the period would be for 12 months.
I will second that.
There's a substitute motion. It's been seconded, and any objections? I'll object. So would remain at 36, they're requesting at 36. So at this point, I'm going to ask for Madam City Treasurer, Maria Contreras. So this is, this is a, this is a motion, a substitute motion to leave this at a 12-month versus a 36-months.
I'm confused.
You want it, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's great. So at this point, we're voting, go ahead?
So the roll call?
For the yes for what you requested? All right, so it's-
All right, just so I'm clear, we're voting to change it from 36 to 12 months?
Yes.
Is that what you're doing? Okay, I would vote no.
Okay. Okay. Okay, no, all right, so the actual substitute motion fails. So at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to pass the actual contract with the consultant as is. For 36 months, that is my motion.
I second.
Any objections?
Yes.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, roll call please, our city treasurer. Yes, yes.
Yes.
No, and I have to understand that in real estate, we're locked in with her for 36 months. That means that if nothing is produced within a year, we have to wait for this contract to be up before we can go to someone else to help us with these properties. That's my concern. So I would say no.
Yes. Yes.
All right, so the motion passes 4-1.
Mayor, also, there are no fees that are being charged, so-
No, there are no fees, but we're locked into a contract for three years. That means if she does not sell any of these properties or whatever, we're locked in. We can't go to another Realtor or another company to represent us.
Hold on, let me just ask the staff, can we change at some point if we don't like the contract?
Yeah, we are, the contract that we're approving tonight has a 30-day termination, so at any time, the city could terminate the agreement with a 30-day notice.
Okay, is that okay with you?
No, it's, my answer's still no. Sorry, thank you.
All right, so the motion was 5-1. All right, so at this point, 4-1, 4-1, excuse me. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to second, item number five, which is the ratify and adopt resolution to approve the Public Works Director Agreement, adopt resolution amending the executive employee benefit matrix, update the city of Baldwin Park's job class- Parks Job Classification Plan, and Revise the Public Works Director's Class, uh, Class, Specifications, and Ratify the Adopt Resolution to Approve the Salary Adjustments and Updates to the Comprehensive City of Ball and Parks Pay Schedule in accordance with CalPur's Established Guidelines. At this point, council member Cruz Baca.
I'm sorry, I made a mistake. I make a motion that we pass number five.
All, I'll second.
Sorry.
Any objections? See none, so move. That's fine. All right, item number seven by council member Cruz Baca, which is authorize an agreement for professional service, services for preparation of construction plans and specifications for Walnut Creek Nature Improvement, Phase Three and Improvement at Morgan Park. Uh, council member Cruz Baca.
Uh, yes, I have a question in regards to the funds, because I didn't quite see, I just saw that some of the grants were coming in to take care of this, but I wanted to see if this was some of Assemblymember Rubio's, uh, grant that she had given the city?
Uh, yes, yes, it is.
Oh, you, Sam, you.
Or, or Manny, either one, we're both working on it.
All right.
But yes, this, this is, this includes the, uh, the grant that was, um, awarded to the city through the, um, Assemblywoman's office.
Did we take care of some of the problems at Walnut Creek with the splintered bridge or whatever it was at one time, or some of the equipment that was broken? The play equipment?
Yes, so we, we, we did meet with, uh, the, uh, manufacturer, and some items were replaced. Uh, part of this new agreement and part of the scope of the architect is to reassess, uh, and, uh, provide solutions for that.
Okay. Uh, I make a motion that we go ahead and pass item number seven, which, do I have to?
Mayor, just real quick, can I interject?
Yes, go ahead.
Also, Sam, uh, we can have it lacquered, because there's splinters sticking out of certain equipment, and the kids sit on it, and I've been told how, um, it's hurt some of the children, so can we figure out how to lacquer the wood on the bridge and, uh, the surrounding picnic area, because they're saying they're sticking out of the, the wood. So, please handle that, thank you.
I second the motion.
All right, second, any objections? See none, so move.
Do I need to read what number seven is before we move forward, instead of just, it says authorize an agreement for professional service for preparation of construction plans and specifications for Walnut Creek Nature Improvements, Phase Three and Improvements at Morgan Park? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, there was a second by council member, uh, Monica Garcia, there was no objections. Item number nine, requested by council member Cruz Baca, accept plans and specifications, and authorize the publishing of the notice inviting bids for the CIP number one zero four, city project number twenty-eighteen dash zero two-two-two, Safe Route to School Project. This is council member Cruz Baca.
Uh, yes, um, the city Safe Routes to Schools master plan, and I know that this has been reviewed many times, um, and been working on it. My question is, is this going to include Tracy and some of the, uh, schools on the east side of Baldwin Park by Fair Grove? Will any improvements be done to those schools?
Uh, not in this project. Um, Tracy Elementary was addressed with the previous, uh, paving project, so we did, uh, the Safe Routes to School improvements, uh, with that project.
And anything else off of Fair Grove where that little girl was hit and so forth because of the crossing?
Um, i, is it near us, near our school, like?
Yes, it's near an elementary school. I don't remember the name of it, but it's off of Fair Grove, and, uh, I think it's Mangum is the name of the street?
Oh, yeah, no, uh, so this project is only, um, looking at the improvements near Pleasant View and Vineland Elementary. So, we're phasing the project, uh, due to, due to budgeting, we're phasing the master plan.
In the master plan, because I, I didn't quite see if Tracy or any, or any of the schools near Fair Grove and Mangum, are any of those going to be addressed at some point?
Absolutely, th, those schools are part of the plan.
Okay, because those crossings, from what I hear from a lot of the parents, when the kids are walking to school, they're all walking with their parents.
Right.
And it's not only the little girl that got hit, along with the baby in a stroller and the mom, but, um, those are some pretty bad crossings getting to the school. So, as soon as we could address some of those, on, like I said, on the east side of town, that would be great, please.
Okay.
Okay, um, I make a motion that we pass item number nine.
I'll second.
All right, any objections? See none, so move.
Uh, Mayor, if I may interrupt for a moment?
Vice Mayor.
Could you check the air? I mean, I think we're hot up here, and everybody's waving.
How about opening up that door? Let's just open that door. It's kind of a breeze outside.
Open the door for a minute, and then turn on the air conditioner.
Yeah, we have someone, we have someone checking on it, and someone, um, on their way to look at it.
Okay, Mayor, continue, thank you.
Okay, and it had to happen on the day we actually officially recognized Mr. Sam Contreras as the Public Works Director. All right, so at this point, uh, we're going out to, uh, item eleven, which is the approved file, uh, parcel number fourteen-seventeen, use of properties for towing vehicles, storage, and, and vehicles repaired. This is also by, uh, council member Cruz Baca.
I would like to bring this back to the August, uh, first meeting, please, because I know that a lot of these violations have been outstanding, or the violations that have, um, been on this property for a long time. I would like to have time to sit down with staff and take a good look at, at the map and everything that, that this, um, that this involves. So, I would like to bring this back, please, to the August first meeting.
Um, is there a second?
Uh, the towing for Royal Coaches, the stowing, the towing and the storage of the vehicles and repair. I want to be sure that they have the correct permits and licenses to be able to be doing vehicle repair, vehicle storage, and there's even a smog shop next door. So, that's what I would like to, for staff to be able to prepare some of those permits and make sure that they're in compliance with the city ordinance.
All right, so at this point, is there a second?
Mayor, I'll, I'll make a substitute motion, um, and, and move this item forward, because I think this has been an ongoing, uh, process, and I do believe that this property owner has been, uh, making, you know, the, going through the process to comply. So, this is part of that process, and I, I'd like to make the motion, substitute motion to move it forward.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, so at this point, uh, any objections?
Yes.
All right, uh, one objection, so, uh, we'll have, uh, city, um, city treasurer, Maria Contreras, roll call, please. All right, so there was a substitute motion to move for item eleven, which is the approval of the final, uh, parcel map number fourteen-seventeen. Go ahead.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
You have a problem, Tim Pacheco?
This is a substitute motion, right?
Yes.
You go ahead and approve.
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
No.
Yes.
All right, so the motion passed, yes, sorry about that. All right, so the motion passes, uh, four, one. All right, so we'll go to item twelve, which is the approved final parcel, uh, number fourteen-thirty-four for single-family residents, that requested by council member Cruz Baca.
Um, I would like to bring, in order to expedite things a bit, uh, items twelve and thirteen back for the August first. I know that, um, there's a, a timeline on this, but I believe that we can bring it back to August the first, so that I can, uh, sit down with staff and take a look at this map and what it entails. I would appreciate it being brought back to August the first, both twelve and thirteen.
All right, so there, is that a motion?
Yes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second, any objections?
I object.
Okay, one objection, is, at this point, Madam City Treasurer, roll call, there is one objection.
Councilmember Baca?
Yes, I want to take it forward.
Well, hold on, let, let me just ask a question. What is the delay on this, if it gets, uh, to staff? If it gets held over one more meeting? You want it held over one more meeting, council?
Yes, to August the first, and I checked with staff, and staff said, because I hadn't had a chance to really sit down, they said if we bring it back to August first, we still have time to meet the deadline per planning commission.
Can I also suggest on, on parcel maps, I mean, they eventually get approved, even if we don't approve them, but if you want to move them over, that's, I agree to that.
All right, okay, all right, so you'll get, drop your motion?
I drop my objection.
Drop my motion, he'll drop his motion.
He's dropping his objection.
Vice, Vice Mayor, uh, yes?
Motion is to bring item twelve and thirteen back to the August first meeting.
Yes, yes, any objections?
No objections.
No objections? Okay, at this point, um, passes, all right, so that's item both twelve and thirteen. All right, item fourteen, uh, authorization to install the maintenance communication equipment with Charter Communications Operations LLC, requested by council member Cruz Baca.
Um, I just want to say that this is great, because Wi-Fi is very much needed. I get asked all the time, um, if there's anything at the community center or any of the facilities that you mentioned in your staff report. Um, is this being done through a grant?
No, it's, it's actually being done free of charge through Spectrum Cable, and we currently have five sites, four locations, two sites being the community center and the senior center, and now, uh, Spectrum, uh, which formerly used to be Charter, will be exploring a few more sites, the amphitheater, the soccer field, the basketball field, and in a few other locations. And it's, uh, it's free of charge, and it is free for two hours per device. So, if you should have an iPhone, an iPad, a laptop, that would be six hours, two hours per device, and/or if you're a customer of Spectrum, it's free of, it's free.
Okay, I make a, I think it's a great idea. The kids playing Pokemon are gonna really love that.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, I make a motion that, um, authorization to install and maintain communication equipment with Charter Communications Operating.
And I'll second that.
All right, so at this point, there, a motion by, uh, councilman Cruz Baca, seconded by council member, um, Monica Garcia, and there, any objections? See none, so move. All right, we'll go to item fifteen, council member Susan Rubio, second reading of ordinance number fourteen, well, authorizing the City Ball and Park to enter development agreement with Ruby, the, the Grove Folks, Inc., uh, and also International Corporation and Tier One Consulting for the Distribution. At this point, council member Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to make a motion to, um, bring back fourteen-twelve, ordinance number fourteen-twelve on this item, only because, um, there is a proposed state regulation that just came out today, and I don't think, Shannon, I'm not sure if you were aware of it, because you haven't discussed it with us, but it's very significant and important to what we're trying to do here, because this is a proposed state regulation that would allow cannabis distribution pretty much in any jurisdiction. And so, what this item entails, number, um, I'm sorry, ordinance number fourteen-twelve, is that particular, um, exact thing that we're trying to give them a monopoly in my, in the city, but if we move forward, the, uh, the state is hearing this item on August seventh, and August fourteenth, and I think it's best that we wait to see where this leads, because it will not only impact this particular contract, but it will definitely impact the entire cannabis community, because most cities wouldn't have an issue with all the other cannabis, um, operators, but in particular for us, every DA includes very specific language about exclusivity, and if the state decides to move forward with this, all of the DAs are gonna be non-existent, and we're gonna have to start all over again. And so, I would ask that we bring it back until we're able to sit down and discuss this item, to see how it's going to impact us. Um, there's also other concerns that I have, and I know that I haven't seen the safety plan that I asked four months ago. I would love for this operator to sit down with me and not only show me the safety plan, but this goes also to our police department. I would love them to sit down and create a plan in conjunction with our police department, because this continues to be a really big concern of mine. Uh, we have to put resident safety first, and I haven't seen the master plan, safety plan that we had, well, at least I had expressed about four months ago, so we can also, in the meantime, figure out where the state is moving with this, uh, regulation, and figure out how we can also sit down and go over the safety plans for our city. Um, that would also be something that I would ask for. And lastly, we're still going through this lawsuit based on this monopoly, so it's almost, um, it doesn't make sense to move forward, because we're still being sued based on this, uh, monopoly, and there's no point in moving forward if the state is gonna dismantle it anyways, and we're still spending legal fees. Uh, this is taxpayer money, and I think that we need to be mindful of that, and so I don't mind discussing it at a future time, but at least giving us an opportunity to hear what the state decides on the fourteenth, um, and on the fourteenth, and, I'm sorry, seventh and fourteenth. So, my motion would be to bring back ordinance number fourteen-twelve until the state decides which direction to go and discuss the safety plan that we have in place. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, then.
Mayor, I would like to make a substitute motion to go ahead and move this item forward, and I'm sure at the time that, um, a state law, you know, took effect, it would supersede local law anyway, so my motion is to move this item, and, um, you know, just be done with it.
All right, I'll second.
But it's easy to say, let's be done with it, but the taxpayers are still paying for the lawsuit, so why would we move forward with a lawsuit in place over this monopoly when the state is gonna potentially dismantle this, um, all of our DAs, not necessarily this particular company, but all fourteen or fifteen that we have in place? Again, we're the only ones that are gonna struggle with this issue, only because we have specific language about, uh, exclusivity in every single DA, and so I don't see why we would waste staff time at this point or move forward with it. I think it's prudent to just wait. We don't have to deal with the lawsuit, which is really important. Taxpayers or the city would not have to defend it, and at least we move forward knowing where the state is gonna be on this item, so I really don't see why we couldn't wait one more council meeting, just to see where the state lands on this issue. Thank you.
Mayor, there's a motion and a second.
Hold on, yeah, there's been a substitute. I second, any objections?
Clarification here.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, first, Councilwoman, uh, Rubio's requested that this be held off until the state looks at it more, as, as far as ordinance, or are you looking for, to hold it off to the next meeting?
Well, the state is having its, uh, hearing August the seventh, and, uh, to me, that would give us an indication which direction they're going, based on the, um, some of the presentations, and so August seventh, I believe, uh, we have a council meeting the second week of August. We can bring it back to the second week of August, after, after the, um, the state figures out where they're gonna go with this direction. And just to be clear, the way this reads is that they would allow cannabis deliveries in all jurisdictions. That means it doesn't matter if we have a DA that says that they could only transfer within the city boundaries. It means that they would supersede what we have, and unfortunately, all the DAs have this information, uh, very particular language about exclusivity, so it would put us basically back at the drawing board and have to go renegotiate with everyone else. So, I think it's important to have all the information. Let's wait until the seventh, until the, um, state figures that out, and then we can move forward. So, yes, bring them back to the second, um, meeting in August after the seventh, so the state can decide what they're doing with this.
Okay, I would request, then, we just hold it off one more meeting. I, I would like staff to look at this ordinance, and then bring back information as to what the impact is.
I would second that.
Mayor?
Yes, councilman.
I would, I would just ask this council to, you know, look at the time that we've put into this. I mean, it's already been more than six months. Um, I understand that, I think it's the City of Bell Gardens that is looking at a similar model, and if it's good enough for another city, then it should be good enough for Baldwin Park. You know, one of the reasons why I supported having one distributor is because I believe that it is safer. There is, um, more accountability with one company versus having multiple companies, and we don't know what's being distributed, at what time, in what vehicle, so on and so forth, so that in and itself, uh, would suggest that there's, you know, greater public safety. But, that's just my position. I would, I would just strongly urge that we just get this done. We know that this has been a very political issue, and we know that it's been a very personal issue. And, you know, if we can just get this done, take care of business. We have multiple operators that have been approved here at the city, and they're on hold. They've invested significant amount of money. We're actually counting on their revenues for our budget. And the longer that we delay this, the more, you know, we're just dilly-dallying at this point. And it's all for political and personal reasons. And so I would just ask that we can reconsider that and we move this item forward. That's, that's my plea. Thank you.
I have two clarifications. Well, number one, just to be clear, no one's being stopped from building, because if you go out to all the sites, people are still constructing. Everything is moving forward. There is no delay in their construction or their delivery. This is just another council meeting, and so again, it doesn't prevent them from moving forward. Everyone's still building, getting their permits, and as we discussed earlier, none of our operators are ready to distribute. So, you know, holding it off one more meeting doesn't, you know, impede or change anything. But you mentioned the city of Bell, that they have that model. Well, if this state law moves forward, even the, the city of Bell would be in violation of the state law. So it would not matter that they have a local ordinance. This clearly states that it prohibits any city from creating a local ordinance that would prohibit any other distributor from coming into our boundary. So it doesn't stop anything. They're still constructing, they're still moving forward. And in the meantime, I would like to sit down with the company to see their, their safety plan. I haven't sat down with them once, and I would love to see that safety plan. And again, I've asked for it for about four months in general, and so I would love that opportunity. It's only one council meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you very much. Yes.
Like I said before, if there is a state law that takes effect, then that would supersede the local jurisdiction. I think we've drug this out long enough. And, you know, I, I just, I ask that the city council move this forward. I know that there's a substitute motion, a second. I, is there an objection?
Is there an objection?
Well, it is because we're getting sued, so it's not like we're just moving forward. We're getting sued. This would prevent us from moving forward with legal fees. It's really important that we understand that taxpayers are paying for this, so it's not just as simple as saying, let's figure out where the state goes.
Okay.
If we hold it for the next meeting, at least we don't have to keep incurring legal fees for this item.
Can I make a substitute motion?
Yes.
Well, I already, I already.
There's a substitute motion. This was a substitute motion.
Above hers?
Substitute, yeah, substitute motion.
Can we do the roll call and the substitute motion at least?
Hold on, hold on. There's been a substitute motion by Councilmember Monica Garcia, and I'll go ahead and second. So at this point, let's go ahead and go to roll call.
Who was the objection?
Okay.
I object.
There's one objection? Okay, alrighty. Are you doing, are you?
Okay, I'll do the roll call.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, I.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
I wanna move it forward.
Councilmember Rubio?
No.
Councilmember Baca? Councilmember Pacheco?
Okay, are we, are we holding off all this, or just one item?
Ordinance on number fourteen twelve, the, the ordinance that has the monopoly on it.
Hold on, you guys, hold on, hold on. We're doing a substitute motion for that Councilmember Monica, in others, to move forward as is. That's, that's where we're at right now. So basically, right now, there's a, there is a no by Councilmember Susan Rubio, no by Councilmember Cruz.
Yes, a yes by Cruz Baca.
Oh, yes.
I didn't say no.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, yes, by Councilmember Cruz Baca, yes by, so at this point, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Sorry about that, Councilmember.
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, where were the votes again?
Garcia said yes, Lozano said yes.
Yeah, hold on, let the city clerk, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, Alejandra Avila, please.
Garcia said yes, Lozano said yes, Rubio no, Baca yes. We're waiting on Mr. Pacheco.
Excuse me, city clerk, I'm sorry. I, I believe, I, I don't know, but from what I understand, Councilmember Pacheco wants to hear the motion.
He just said it.
Correct?
Yes, he just, yeah, it's correct. Alrighty, Mr. Pacheco, Vice Mayor.
Do we need to repeat it?
Yeah, I'll repeat the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Garcia voted yes, Lozano yes, Rubio no, Baca yes.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
It's a substitute motion to move forward with the item as is and approve, and it was seconded by Lozano.
Okay, no?
You're voting, you voted no? Okay, so the motion passes three, two. Alrighty, alright, thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and go over to, we're gonna go, actually, going to seventeen, am I correct? Requested by Councilmember Cruz Baca, accept and authorize the filing of a notice of completion for the city project. So at this point, who is, who is leading this? Councilmember Cruz Baca, you requested this?
Yes, I did. Hold on one second.
Sure, that's fine.
Because I'm sorry, it's, I lost my train of thought here.
It is hot in here, so bear with us.
It's very hot, but I, but I lost my, with all the motions.
Geez, it's pretty hot back there? Okay. Hey, shut off the lights out there or something here.
Yes, sorry, I finally found my notes.
That's fine.
Um, I, I don't know who would give either some type of an update as to how all this is progressing with this, with the energy efficiency improvements, so that we can sort of know, or I can know and be updated as to what has been done and what will be done, because it says upon expiration of the thirty-five day notice period. So I know that it's Consolidated Solutions. I know it has nothing to do with SCE, but I still want to know, because I remember that, that they came and gave a presentation a while ago. So I, we have, I haven't personally seen an update on any of whatever. That's been several months. And I haven't seen an update on any of the plan or anything that's, that has been done, and I would like to see that, or hear it. Or if, instead of, it's very hot in here, instead of holding up this whole presentation and having everybody sweating and blaming me for it, I would like to move forward and, and make a motion that we accept and authorize the filing of the, of a notice of completion for city project number twenty sixteen to zero one two eight, Energy Efficiency Improvements. But please send us some type of an update and what the plan is for the future. I don't know if it's, it's them, you, Sam, whoever it is.
Yeah, no, yeah, this is my item.
Okay.
I would be very happy to do so.
Alright, so I make a motion that we pass item number seventeen.
Alright, thank you.
And I'll second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Alright, item nineteen, which is consideration of a new public information contract. This is Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Because I'm still. Uh, yes. I believe, I believe that there were different phases that happened with the Lee Andrews group. I would like to bring this back to the August first meeting. I'm gonna try it again, only because I think that Lee Andrews, in speaking to Mr. Vella, Lee Andrews has a new representative, a gentleman by the name of Ricardo. I don't remember his last name or what he told me it was. But I would like to bring this back to the August first meeting, so that we could have not only a presentation from Veronica Perez and Associates, and also have the representative from Lee Andrews give us an update as to what they're, they're going to be doing with the public relations here in our city. So could we please bring this back to the August first meeting, for them to both give us presentations?
Alright, so at this point, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion?
Um, yeah, I would object.
Okay, one objection? Okay, so at this point, Madam City Clerk?
So we didn't have a second, correct?
Right.
No.
Well, hold on. If you didn't get a second, then it drops for the lack of a second, right?
So we never had a justice do a second.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. This one, go ahead. Alright, so you're making a, a motion to bring item number nineteen to the following city council meeting. Is there a second? Okay, see no second, it drops for the lack of a second. So at this point, I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass item number nineteen, which is consideration of a new public information contract. That is my motion.
Give me a second. Are we supposed to make, decide between two options?
No, it says, if you read it, go ahead, explain it, Mayor.
Hold on, let me pull it out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, you, Council.
Also, the recommendation of staff was to direct staff to issue a thirty day termination notice to Lee Andrews group.
That's correct.
And to accept the proposal of Veronica Perez and Associates for one year, with the option to renew for additional year, and direct the city attorney to prepare standard consult agreement to be executed by the mayor.
So this is all three things at the same time? Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe that was the mayor's motion. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes, for nineteen.
And I'm sorry, and I misread it, because earlier today, I thought I saw on the report it said either this or that. But I don't know if it's delayed, but I do, I would like to go back to the original, to bring it back, only because this is a little bit confusing in that we're discussing Lee Andrews at the same time we're discussing a new company, and I would like to see the items separated, because they're two different companies. And so that would make it easier to, to see what we're voting on, because it's a new company with an old company. So can we bring it back in separate items?
There's a motion, currently, there's a motion on the table. I motion to go ahead and accept it, the, the current consideration of a new public information contract, with releasing the, the current, the current PR company, which is the, what's the name of, Lee Andrews, excuse me. And was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Are there any objections?
Yes.
Objection? Okay, so at this point, we're gonna have our city clerk, Alejandra Avila, take roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Baca?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubio?
Yes.
Alright, so the motion passes four, one. Alright, thank you very much. At this point, we'll go over to the, the next item that we have here, which is the public hearing. First one that we have is the public hearing and adoption of resolution number twenty eighteen dash.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Okay.
I don't know if Ms. Perez is here. Hi, just real fast, I'm sorry, Mayor. Since I didn't see your presentation, and I know nothing about your company, would it be possible for you to contact me either through email or my cellphone, so that we could meet in the near future? I have no clue what you're going to be doing for us. I do have ideas as to what I would like to see.
Actually, it would be our pleasure to speak with you and other members of the council.
Yeah, but I, I'm speaking because I don't know if the other council members know you, or how you got on this agenda. That's neither here nor there. I would like to get to know you and, and share some of my ideas about some of the public relations for our city. Thank you.
Alrighty, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. Alright, so at this point, we're going over to public hearing, which is the item twenty-one, the public hearing and adoption of resolution number twenty eighteen dash two seven six, ordering the assessment for the citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district. So at this point, who is handling this?
That would be me, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So what you have before you is an item that opens up a public hearing for public comment for the annual levy and collection of the assessments associated with the citywide landscape maintenance district.
Alrighty. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the public hearing adoption of the resolution? And this is the citywide landscaping lighting maintenance. Anyone opposing? Okay.
Ken Woods, I'm a homeowner and a business property owner. I simply want to know, how much is this one gonna cost me? And as for an example, I'm gonna give you a little thing that I always bring up about the fire department. Ten years ago, they put up an assessment, tax assessment, for fourteen dollars. And the, the fire chief said, this will never go up. Last year, I paid a hundred and seventy dollars for that fourteen dollar assessment that would never go up. What's this one gonna cost me? I want to know, right now. What's this gonna cost me?
Yeah, so this particular.
Hold on, hold on, let the public hearing close, and then, okay, that's fine.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Yeah, that's fine. You will, okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to opposing?
Hello, city council, residents of Ballin Park. You know, the young lady over here put in assessment, and they go, well, it's not a form of taxes, it's an assessment. Well, you know what? I really believe that you people look through the books to find loopholes, and that's what you do. You leave something in there, so next year, you can come back and say, oh, public hearing again, which, these are actually useless. We tell you, don't add, excuse me, assessments, but you do it anyway. It comes down to bright old number, big old tax. And, you know, you people just keep doing it, year after year. What do you do with all that money you get? Are you throwing it away, spending it? You guys give me the impression you're using it for personal gain, you know? Every year, you get an assessment, oh, I forgot, before it was a tax, now it's an assessment. Don't you guys get tired of paying taxes? No, it's okay, they'll pay out anyway. Otherwise, they'll confiscate their home. This poor city's full of taxes. You people tax us every year on the same thing, you know? And all you do is change some lights, add this, add that, take that away, take that away, and add us more taxes. You know, the lady was right. It's not an assessment, but it's a tax. You don't represent none of us, because you guys only care what you can gain from it. The only thing that you gain is a bad reputation. You guys lie to everybody. You tell, you don't tell us it's a tax, because you know why? You're scared. But you guys put on this subject twenty-one, put this assessment on property tax bill. You know why? Because it's a tax. You people can't understand, but it's okay. You know, I'm gonna live another hundred years, you'll keep hearing it. There they go, talking. They can't wait to talk about what I'm talking about. You know, they don't want to give us, give me three minutes, they have all day and all night. But it's okay, we'll interrupt these three minutes, you know? It's not right. I got three minutes to speak, you should listen to me. And then when those three minutes are up, you can discuss anything you want. It's only common courtesy. Thank you. But that mayor, terrible stuff, terrible. One, two, three, I think, three minutes. That's all you give us to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you. Alright, anyone else opposing? Okay, at this point, I want to go ahead and close the public hearing. Just to let everyone know, so that it's made very clear, nothing, there's no new taxes in this. This is the same amount you paid last year. This is just a routine thing that has to be shared publicly. We can't raise the taxes, because then we would have to take it to the voters based on state, on state, one of the state bills, I think it's three eighteen, two eighteen, that would mandate us to send it to the voters. So just wanted everyone to know, not, everything stays as is. Alrighty.
Mayor, I'm sorry, and, and the wording is deceiving. The wording says exactly, assessor to add this special assessment to the property tax bills. It doesn't say to continue or to.
Previous.
Or to, whatever it is with the previous bills. So it is, it is very deceiving, the wording, and unfortunately, this probably comes from, I don't know, from the county or whoever it is that, that we, that does, well, the county tax assessor is where it comes from. But I think it's very deceiving, because even, it even made me think that there was going to be another assessment, a part of everything that we're paying, to the existing property tax. So I think that we need to make that very clear in the future, that this is only continuing from our previous, and it's gotta be rolled over, or it's gotta be continued, so that the property owners will know, that it's, there will be no significance or no change to their existing assessment. This way, we're not all thinking that it's going to be another two hundred dollars or whatever it is. And, and also, I know that our staff works very hard at looking for grants and so forth. I know SCE just replaced a lot of our, our streetlights with LED. And I know, Mr. Luna, that your area of town has been dark for a long time, but little by little, we have been putting in some of the lights through grants, not through the assessment, but through grants, through SCE. So if we could have that clarification before we pass that, if you please, is that possible?
I'd imagine we probably could, maybe amend that. So why don't we make a motion that we amended, so that it is, that it is, reflects as, or is there timing around this? Is that?
Yes, Mayor, we do need to get this onto the tax rolls.
Okay.
And the reason it says add to the property tax bill is because the city council has to vote each year to add it onto the tax bill, and that is your method of collection. If you don't put it on the tax bill and collect it that way, you have to come up with another way to bill the homeowners and collect it.
Well, then, let's just go ahead and pass. It's not a tax bill, so that's clear.
Yes, and, and make the clarification that if anyone asks, maybe we should put it on our website or something, so that it clarifies that this is only being, the same as it was from previous years, and just being added to the property with no additional cost to the property owners. I would like to see something like that, if you please.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, so at this point, I'll move with the motion with the recommended by Councilmember Cruz Baca for the clarification for the residents. Alright, so at this point, I'll go ahead and move. That's my motion, second. Any objections? See none, so move. Item twenty-two, which is also similar, public hearing and adoption of resolution number twenty eighteen dash two seven seven, ordering the assessment for the citywide park maintenance district for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen. So at this point, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposing? See no interest, and I'll declare the public hearing closed. So at this point, I will make a motion to pass this item. Second by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes, but on this one as well, if you, we could please change the wording, if you please, and note, so that the residents can see that there will be no added costs incurred or whatever to their property tax.
Alright, so we'll, we'll amend that with the, with request by Councilmember Cruz Baca as well. So there's a motion, seconded by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See none, so move. Alright, so we'll go on to the next one. The update on the reports of officers, update city ballpark fee schedule based on consumer price index, C I, C I, CPI, and other adjustments. Who's addressing this?
Rose.
Rose.
Good evening, Mayor and city council, and the resident of Ballin Park and business owners. And I was asked from last city council meeting to bring back a PowerPoint to present to the public. And I'm going to show everyone the PowerPoint to summarize the fee schedule that we are going to update.
Alright, so at this point, council members have any questions? Do we need an approval for this? Okay, so at this point, I'll make a motion to update the city ballpark fee schedule based on consumer index. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Item twenty-four, the approval and, and direction to proceed with professional service agreements for the transit service. Can we bring this back? Is this the decision one, for the ones we just met this afternoon, this evening?
That's correct.
Okay, let's move this to the following month, please. Let's reschedule that, item twenty-four.
Mayor, is there any impact of timing on this one?
I don't think so. Is there?
No, we'll continue the month-to-month with the current carrier.
Okay, can I second that motion?
Alright, thank you. Alright, so item twenty-five was the, a motion, okay, there's a, a motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monica Garcia. Any objections? Oh, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, second. Any objections?
Lozano rejected.
A motion, yes. A motion? One objection?
I object.
Okay.
I would like to, I would like to continue, oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to move forward with this item and, uh, give a two-year extension to Southland Transit.
Are, are you making a substitute motion?
Yes, I am.
All right, so there's a-
An objection or a substitute? She objected.
I objected.
Oh, so you objected?
Objected.
Okay. All right, hold on. So, let's go back. So, at this point, I made a motion to bring this item back for next month. It was seconded by Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, then Councilmember Cruz Baca suggested that it be taken in to consider sharing now to Southland.
I would, I would like to make a substitute motion to go ahead and, um, extend the two-year contract to Southland Transit.
Okay, so there's a substitute motion, which supersedes the previous, um, requests on, on, on line search. So, at this point, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second, any objections?
I object.
Okay, one objection. At this point, we're gonna go over to Alejandra Avila for the objection. That means, uh, regarding the motion requested by Councilmember Cruz Baca.
For the substitute motion.
Yes.
Yes, that's her.
Mayor Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Rubio?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Pacheco?
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
No.
Mayor Lozano?
No. Okay, so the substitute motion fails for, for lack of, of, so at this point, I'm gonna go over, the vote was, uh, three, two. This point, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the direction, excuse me, not approve, that we move this to the following month. That is my motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay, any objections? No objections, we'll move to the following month. All righty, thank you very much. The next one we have is a direction and approval of an, an official police toll service franchise. So, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve this, well, wait a minute, hold on, let me just get-
There's options.
There's options here, yes, so... Okay, so, let me just get something out real quick. All right, so at this point, the, the options that we have, the recommendation, of course,[1541.04]